Good evening. It's June 6th. That's the anniversary day.
It is.
Right? Okay. Anyway, it's June 6th and this is a special meeting of the Board of Education. We did have a workshop scheduled for this evening which will immediately follow the business meeting, which is just consists of a couple of agenda items. So why don't we get started by asking everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, because this is a special meeting, we don't typically reserve time for announcements or statements from members of the Board. However, today we are going to put some time aside to do that. And Henry, you have an announcement?
Yes, I'm sorry to say that I have to resign from the Board. I'm stepping down. In the last five, in the last nine months, my job description at work has changed drastically and I no longer have the time necessary to devote to being a trustee on the Board. I'm sorry and I apologize to the voters for not being able to fulfill my obligations, but I'll continue to look for other ways to serve the district in the time that I have available.
Great. Thank you, Henry. And you have had, you know, quite an impact already on that first year of your service and we appreciate you stepping up and doing that. We have put together a plan and so I'm going to ask Michelle to make it, you know, to make an announcement and also to just kind of describe the timeline. We are required to fill that trustee position and that's what Michelle's going to be discussing.
Sure. The Board will be seeking to appoint a new member to fill the vacancy created by Henry's resignation. The term of the new member will expire on June 30th, 2017. All applicants wishing to be considered by the Board must submit their resumes to the District Clerk by close of business on June 16th. The Board will then schedule interviews and anticipate on making an announcement of their appointment at the re-arg meeting, which will be on July 7th. So again, the important dates there are that the term, although Henry has two years left on his term, the term of the new member will expire on June 30th, 2017. It'll be a one-year term. And that resumes are due to the District Clerk by June 16th by the close of business.
And then just to be clear, is that that position will then be voted on at the May budget vote in 2017. So again, as Michelle explained, and just to be clear, because it is a little confusing, even though there are two years left on the term, this appointment will be for one year and then that position will, an election will be held with that position along with the, with two other trustee positions that expire next year during the May budget vote. Okay?
If I could just add, I want to thank Henry for the time that he's been with us. And I really do respect your decision because as he knows from being on the Board, it is a very big commitment. And if you know you can't give it your all, I respect your decision. So thank you because I think that's what's best for the district and I thank you for thinking of us in that way. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, good luck, Henry, and I'm sure we'll still see you around at the meetings.
Thanks. Okay. All right. So let's go on with the business of the Board. This is a second policy reading for, and this is a procedural agenda item. Policy 1500 is the public use of schools. There is going to be an edit, which I'm pulling up right now. It is, yeah, the, all of our policies and procedures are available online. When you go to Board Docs, there is a library of all of our policies and procedures. Again, I'm not going to read the four-page procedure, but I will highlight the change that we're looking to implement after the third reading of the policy. And that would be out of respect for residential neighbors, start time for the use of the football field next to the high school will be 10:00 a.m. on Saturdays and 11:00 a.m. on Sundays unless it is a school function. Gates will not open until one-half hour before entry is allowed. So that is going to be the change in the, in the existing policy, which is Policy 1500. Now, does anybody have any questions or any concerns or any things that they'd like to add? Because I just noted one thing.
Yeah, I have one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought about this and I understand and I'm very sensitive to the community, the members that live across on the football field. And I think what started this was some adult league folks that were coming from far away, that were coming into the district and leaving messes. And I know it's used, the fields used quite a bit by soccer, by football programs that house a lot of kids that go to our district. And the, being selfish talking about football because my son played football, well, and Kathy, your son too, I'd say 70 to 75 percent of the kids on that team were Tuckahoe kids that live in this community. I know we're considering this for the eight, ten or helms that are adjacent to the football field. And again, I sympathize with folks that noise and clutter and parking is an issue, but have we reached out or should we reach out to the folks that are running these leagues and these programs, like the youth soccer program has a lot of our kids and the football program that has a lot of our kids? Because does this create a nightmare for them as far as scheduling goes? And the reason again why I'm just bringing this up, and I'm not saying that this is my opinion either way, I'd like to get feedback from the community more than from us, is, you know, we may make 10 people happy that live across the street from the fields, but we might inconvenience 70, 80 families of Tuckahoe kids that pay taxes to use those fields as well. So before we, you know, as this is the second reading, I think between now and then, we should get some dialogue from those groups to make sure that they're aware that this is what the plan is and to see what their, their ideas are around how they conduct their leagues, if that's going to be enough time for them on the weekends for our kids to be able to play some of these sports. Because I know we're putting in here that if it's a school sponsor program, then by all means we can go early. But, you know, even though these programs outside of the district aren't school official programs, it's, it's our kids and our taxpayers that are using these programs. So we should consider them as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And that's the exact reason why they have use of the fields, because of that, exactly what you did say.
Yeah.
And again, that is why we have the public reading. So there is more time still for public input. And if they have any comments at all and want input, that would be great.
Right. And the thing that I noted is that it seems that this change is limited to the high school football field. Was that intentional? I mean, I know that that seems to be the biggest issue, but do we also want to extend it to, I don't know if Cottle Field is being used as regularly as the football field may be and whether or not that's an issue in the morning?
We haven't gotten any complaints. That's the thing.
Yeah, and I don't think Cottle, the baseball field down there, is being used that early in the morning. And they would park on the school side and not parking on the residential side.
Right.
You know, so I don't think the families there have as much of a complaint.
So should we be a little proactive and maybe say, you know, school facilities rather than limiting it to just the high school field?
At least both fields. If we're going to do it, I think it should be both fields. I would agree.
Okay.
Which again poses a problem to some of these leagues that use it. So, and you know, I know baseball uses Cottle quite a bit. My kids don't play baseball, but like, you know, every morning when I go get bagels on the weekend and it's 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, those kids are being used.
Right.
So, you know, I don't want to cause a, a big disruption to the kids that are in these programs because we're taking, I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but when you take three hours away from a day of a field that's used, it's significant. And it's not three hours, it's five hours if they start 8:00 in the morning just at this field. And then if we throw Cottle in there, you're looking at another five hours. It's 10 hours on a weekend that these kids have less ability to play.
Okay.
And I, and I know this is not popular with the people that live by these football fields. And believe me, I know some of you and I care about you and I sympathize with you, but almost every field that has a school field isn't even locked. It's open 24 hours a day. And now we're trying to limit the use of these fields even more so.
Right. And we know that we share these fields with not just these organizations, but also the town. And there is a dearth of available time in existing fields. And I think you make a good point that it is going to further limit, you know, the availability of fields.
You see, my thing is I have a big issue with us renting these fields out to organizations that aren't from this area. And, you know, if they're adult leagues or soccer program leagues that are coming in here, I understand it's nice to get the finances in there, but yeah, I don't think that they should be there at 8:00 in the morning on a Sunday.
Right.
But if it's local community members using the field that, you know, their kids are playing on the fields at, you know, 9:00 in the morning, I-
Right. And the, and the, a piece that's missing from this, and maybe it's not appropriate to, or is, or should it be in the policy itself, is, you know, the whole issue of parking. And it seems that, you know, even if we did change the time, you know, again, we're just discussing this, if we changed the time of when fields were available, that, you know, perhaps some of the concerns that have been expressed by the neighbors might be mitigated by making sure that people are parking in the parking lot rather than double parked here on, on Middle Road. So I'm, so there's a couple of things I'm going to ask the superintendent to look into. And I don't know if you'll kick it over to Jim or somebody, but, you know, we need to reach out to these community organizations that currently use our fields. And then also what can be done to, to limit access to Middle Road and to ensure that everybody is parking at the available parking lots.
So one thing we could demand-
And don't say we close the road because we know that that's not easy to do.
One thing that we could demand is how many spaces are in our lot here? I'm not even sure. Do you mind if anybody knows?
Sixty.
I mean, that really should house most of the cars for a soccer game or a football game.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that drop off also.
The problem is probably in that intermission, like, you know, when you have two games, one's ending, one's starting and people are lingering. But maybe we talk to the town in a way that we police these streets of people who aren't parking on the private property streets. And maybe if the parking lot gets full, then you got to park down the street by the Cottle Field and work your way up. Because I am sensitive to that. I wouldn't want to live on a street where people are parking like two inches from my driveway on either side because they're going to a football game for a program that's not a school function. It is inconvenient and I recognize that. But I think there's better ways to sort of police this where we don't take time away from, from the youth of this, this area. I mean, it's-
I think it's also what would be, what's considered excessive. So is 8:00 in the morning on a Sunday considered excessive? Seven, you know, that they're showing up at 7:00?
I agree.
So it may just be a compromise of the hours and something that would not take away as much time, but that would help out with-
I'm with you.
So I think that's-
I think 11:00 is, is pretty late in the day for, to start on a Sunday. I think, you know, you, programs get started, I, I don't really have a big problem with opening a field at 9:00 on a Sunday morning personally.
All right. So there's more discussion to be had. I, if we were thinking of doing a third reading at the next board meeting, I think that that's probably not a good idea.
No.
And that maybe we should reserve it for, right, because it is next Monday, we should reserve it at earliest at the re-arg meeting in July.
Mm-hmm. That's fair.
Okay. All right.
And then Charlie just asked that maybe you reach out to, I think we should be proactive in reaching out to some of these, like, at minimum, the, I think it's the Tuckahoe Soccer Association, which ones? I don't-
Eastchester Youth Soccer Association.
And the football program. I don't know of any other big, like, programs that use our field with local kids that aren't part of the school district. Nothing's come to my-
The football, the football program, you said?
The football and the, and the soccer program would be the two that I would reach out to first and foremost.
Yeah, I believe the soccer schedules though, the permits are actually given through the town. So that they are the ones who, I think, allocate the times for the soccer league. If I'm not mistaken, I, I could be wrong, but we could look into that.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is to approve a memorandum of understanding resolved to accept the MOA between the Tuckahoe Union Free School District and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association dated May 19th, 2016. Do I have a motion? Steven, second. Kathy, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved? Okay. Now I need a motion to adjourn the business meeting. We will be reconvening in executive session. Do I have a motion? Steven, second. Kathy, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved? You know what? Actually, I made a mistake. I can't, I'm sorry?
Presentation.
Oh, the present, well, no, no, I know that. But I said, I can't adjourn the business meeting because we will be reconvening in executive session. So we're going to keep the, keep the meeting open. And now we're going to go with the strategic plan update on curriculum. Okay.
We're just going to move over here to get easier.
So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to present on our second strategic plan, which is curriculum. As most of you know, we have eight different sections to our strategic plan. And the strategic plan started in 2013. It is a five-year strategic plan. We are in year three. And over the course of this school year, we have presented on the seven other sections. We've given updates to the Board and the community. Today is the final section, which is the area of curriculum. So I will begin by just pointing something out. Throughout the plan, we talk about alignment to the Common Core curriculum. Right now in New York State, there is a shift and New York State is adopting their own learning standards. They are aligned with the National Common Core, but going forward, you will hear us refer to the learning standards as the New York State learning standards. And that should take effect this upcoming school year. So I did take the liberty of changing the title from Common Core to New York State, and I'll refer to it throughout the presentation. So one of our first goals in this area a couple of years back was to operationalize the new standards in the Tuckahoe School District. So we've been diligently working on that. Today's, this evening's bullets will really focus on what we've done over the past year. So first, for example, at the elementary level, we expanded our New York State-aligned curriculum, our literacy curriculum, Reading Wonders. It is a McGraw-Hill program through grades three, four, and five. Initially, a couple of years back, we started in K1 and 2. Now it is throughout the elementary school and that has been supported by some very robust staff development. Also, in the secondary level, grades six through 12, we've been adapting curriculum modules, some of them from New York State. And in some cases, we've developed our own ELA modules. That has been successful, but it is a work in progress and it is a major initiative that will continue in, in the years to come. In the area of mathematics, basically in grades six through eight, we are using math modules, but an adapted version of the New York State math modules. There were a lot of issues. They needed to be changed pretty significantly. We've had consultants in, our teachers have worked diligently, and I think we are in a good place with our math program at this point. At the high school now, algebra, geometry, and Algebra II all have new exams. They are all completely aligned with, with the new New York State standards. And particularly in algebra, we were not satisfied with our scores in recent years, and that is on the Common Core algebra regions. So we also added and adopted a algebra textbook, McGraw-Hill product as well. And we believe that is going to show us better results. There's an online, online version, excuse me, as well as a hard copy version that the students refer to in class. Moving on, social studies has been a major, major part of our professional development this year, at the elementary and middle level, and then also at the secondary level. We've sent teachers to a number of workshops up at Southern Westchester Bowses and just basically having them talk about the realignment of the framework, grades K through 12. Also, inquiry is a huge emphasis. We have a new social studies exam that will be implemented in June of 2018. It will be not only global history, but geography. So the exam is changing and we are realigning to make sure our students are prepared for this new exam, which will take place not this, this upcoming school year, but the following school year. And inquiry is something that we've always done, but we've really stepped up and placed more of an emphasis on it to be better aligned with, with the state learning standards. Also, you see, the third bullet there is the writing revolution, which, which is a major initiative that two years ago, we did not anticipate we would be moving in this direction. We always believed that we had work to do in the area of writing and literacy throughout the district. But fortunately, last year, we received a $75,000 grant. Tuckahoe High School, as you may know, was, was designated as a reward school for three years in a row. This year, we got the designation again. So it's four years in a row for closing the achievement gap and for high performance. So the state provided us with $75,000 and we contracted with, with a very well-respected national consultant. Her name is Ms. Judith Hockman. Dr. Hockman has been here with a team of people helping train our staff on the writing revolution initiative. The writing revolution is all subjects and all grades. Everyone, even phys ed, music teachers, everyone has a consistent and common approach. They're using common language. They're teaching common skills to reinforce this across, you know, all curricular areas. The way the, the partnership works, and it will continue in, in the upcoming school year, is that we have entire faculty workshops where strategies are presented. There are also site visits where we, the team members go into classrooms, observe teachers, provide specific feedback on how they are doing with the implementation of this method. There are consultation sessions for teachers as well as administrators. And then there are product reviews. Our teachers will actually take samples of students' work and send it to our consultants without students' names. But the consultants are reviewing it carefully to make sure the skills are showing up in our students' writing and giving specific feedback for what the teachers need to do to, to continue to work towards this goal. And that is happening in all three schools and it will go on throughout next year and probably beyond. The sci, the area of science, right now, there are major changes in science that we anticipate, but they are not official yet. In New York State, there's a proposal in front of the Board of Regions, which I believe within a month or two, they will formally adopt. Teachers have had input into the new science standards and that's a good thing. Early on in this transition, the state was very top-down in their approach and there was a lot of, I think, pushback. But we are seeing that they are much more receptive and open to having educators provide input. So therefore, we're looking forward to the new science standards and that will prompt us to allocate more resources and focus on that in, in the years ahead. This, I'm going to gloss over just quickly because you've heard it before. Early on, we, we thought there was a need to require that our students had the research skills necessary to go on to college. So one of our early goals was to implement a research paper requirement before students left high school. We've done that. It takes place in our U.S. History course with Ms. Heinsohn. And that is also collaborative effort with the English department. And that is required for every student that goes through Tuckahoe High School. Moving on, curriculum mapping was another goal that is still very much a work in progress, but I think we made some good progress this past year. Last summer, we had teachers working on curriculum initiatives pilot some different software. There's a number of different software products for curriculum mapping. They came back to us. They gave us feedback on what they liked, what they didn't like. And the curriculum committee met throughout the year. And we had a number of different vendors come in and present their products to our school, school curriculum committee. What we decided on was Rubicon Atlas, and I'm skipping to the, the second bullet, Rubicon Atlas Management System. This is widely accepted throughout Westchester. We called a lot of neighboring districts, including Chappaqua and Rye, to make sure the teachers and administrators were happy with the product. But it, it is basically providing a framework that, that is online. It's a living, breathing document as curriculum should be. Teachers develop it and then teachers also share it. And there are a few levels of this, this curriculum mapping software. One is, is a level where you give parents and community members access and is more general understanding of your curriculum. And there's a deeper, deeper level of access for teachers and administrators and the educators actually using the curriculum and, and enhancing it over years. This, we formally signed contracts with this company. So starting this summer, every new piece of curriculum developed by Tuckahoe teachers, any curriculum initiative, it must be created using this new software. And it requires them to consider different aspects of curriculum, such as, you know, what is the essential question of your lesson? What is the assessment? How do you know that the students will learn what you intend, intend for them to learn? So they have to go through all of these different aspects of a high-quality lesson. And I think it'll be a helpful tool, tool for our teachers. I kind of got ahead of myself here, but professional development will also be provided for this software tool. So it comes in two forms. There'll, there'll be a general introduction for everyone on how to use the software. But then there's targeted PD. So part of the package of purchasing this, there'll be targeted instruction and there's online support as well as phone support. It was important for us in selecting the product that we know that the, the customer service was high quality. And the other districts assured us that it was. So if a group of teachers, let's say our, our social studies department is here in this library this summer developing curriculum, well, they can easily submit if they have any questions. They run into a glitch. They have online support as well as phone support at any time. In the area of health and phys ed, we're very excited this year. The Board and the community has supported the creation of a Director of Health, Phys Ed, and Athletics for the first time in Tuckahoe. What we're excited about is, you know, not only working on with our sports programs, but really working on curriculum alignment for health and phys ed from pre-K all the way through 12th grade. And we, we've done some work in those areas, but I, I think it hasn't been comprehensive enough. And one person, I think, you know, with that overview from, from pre-K through 12 will be very, very advantageous for us as a district. In fact, our, our new person coming in is already calling me and sending me different ideas of curriculum that he's looking at. He knows this is one of his major Next, we, we also have a goal in the area of STEAM. So in the original plan, we called it STEM. We left out art. But we, I've modified it slightly. So to enhance STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, because this interdisciplinary type of approach, all these areas really go together beautifully with, with a lot of project-based learning. So our goal back then was to expand curriculum and further enhance recent initiatives to improve and support improvement in STEAM subjects, grades pre-K through 12. Some examples of this, now I said earlier, you know, the science curriculum and the science standards have not been formally adopted yet, but we've still taken some steps in the right direction. As you know, the, the district has a wonderful technology for all initiative. We won an award last year, Pioneer Award. It's being integrated into all subjects at all grade levels. Also, down at Cottle, and you've probably heard this before, but the Science Fair just continues to, to build momentum. It's in its fifth year. It had a record number of students participating that actually went down to kindergarten. So every child K through 5 participated. There is an excitement and a motivation around science. Also, at Cottle, they have an amazing weekend event that is the Family Science Fun Day, where, where we tap into all of the wonderful resources in this community. We have a lot of, you know, parents and, and community members working in the field of science and medicine. And they come in and do some amazing things and work with our children directly. Also in sixth grade, another example of STEAM being integrated into our program is, is a new coding elective. For the first time, Dr. Mosher did a coding elective in grade six. It was very well-received. We hope to build on that going forward. Also, through the Tuckahoe Schools Foundation, we received a robotics grant. So next year, Dr. McDonnell is not positive, but she's hoping to have it scheduled in seventh grade as a robotics elective. And in addition, have a robotics club at the middle school. We recently received notice that we were approved for this. Also, our high school art teacher, Heather Capretti, has record enrollment and runs one elective that is called STEAM. And she's doing amazing things with a 3D printer, having students create projects that were never, never possible before we had this technology. She's doing great stuff. Next year, we believe that we'll shift over to a science teacher. So there may be a little more of an emphasis on science, but we, we think that'll be exciting as well. I mentioned the 3D printers. There is one at the middle school, one at the high school, being used widely by, by all of our students. Very exciting projects, as you could, you could read. Phone cases for their, for their iPhones, keychains. They even designed the prop, the, the central prop for the, the school musical, the shelf of the Little Mermaid. That was done with 3D printers. They had to create pieces. It was a real, a real challenge for them, but it was a real hands-on, real-life project that our students responded beautifully to. And we hope to do more in this area. Those are just some examples. Also interdisciplinary, this is our, our last goal under curriculum. This is very much a work in progress. We do have many quality interdisciplinary initiatives that take place, but we'd like to see more. And I, probably this is the area that Dr. McDonnell will really need to run with. The writing revolution I mentioned earlier, it really lends itself to interdisciplinary. Again, it's a cross-curricula. Everyone is using it. So it's, it's a common approach, common language, common expectations for curriculum, for literacy, excuse me. Also, teachers on various grade level are designing and, and we're supporting it, you know, through, through time at department meetings, but also summer curriculum projects. One example is, for example, in eighth grade, they study the Holocaust in history. Okay? But our teacher, it also had a book on the Holocaust. The first, it's a book based on the life of the, the youngest survivor of Schindler's, people that he saved from, from, from the, the book and the film Schindler's List. So the young man is, is a central character. That book was a New York Times bestseller. The English department was reading the book. History was studying the Holocaust. And then we also had an assembly with a Holocaust survivor, which happened recently. And there are very few- there are very few left, but we, the students actually met, you know, historical figure, someone who survived the Holocaust and was able to share firsthand their experience. That's just one example. There, there are others, but this is an area that I really believe there's room for growth and we need to do more of and, and I do see that happening in, in the years ahead. I'll take any questions you may have.
When we come back up then, then we can take any questions or comments.
All right, so does anybody have any questions or comments for, for Carl regarding the presentation?
I'll just, one thing, I, all of these initiatives are, it's a real challenge for some of the teachers I know because every time we roll out Writing Revolution, it's, it's new things for our, our staff to learn and from what I've heard, they've been overwhelmingly willing to take on these new responsibilities and work extra hard at night and do things that they have to do to be able to get themselves up to speed. And, and these programs and these initiatives wouldn't be successful without the support of, of the teaching staff. So I just want to let them know, if they're watching, that as a parent, I really appreciate their dedication to these kids and their ability to, to take on these new tasks that are additional, but at the same time, I think these, these programs, while it's a lot of work up front, probably makes their jobs even easier as it goes along because everything kinda gets, you know, simplified and it gets easier as, as years go on. So I know they're paying their dues today, especially with, you know, Chromebooks, I've said that before, and just, just putting lessons on a Chromebook is extra work that they didn't have before. Common Core, Writing Revolution, there's a lot of stuff that they've been asked to, to take on for the betterment of our kids' education. So for, for one, I really appreciate, I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart that they took that on in these last couple of years.
Great, thanks. Anybody else? I'd just like to add that, you know, one of the concerns, I've said this before about, you know, implementing a strategic plan is ensuring that we maintain fidelity to that plan. And, you know, clearly you guys have done a great job in doing that, but I don't think that any of the things that Steve mentioned or our ability to keep to the plan would have been possible without the, the support of the community. You know, the community has approved the strategic plan, they've kept tabs on the strategic plan, our budgets are now built in order to support a lot of the initiatives in the strategic plan and so we've seen a lot of great improvements in the school district and again, thankful and grateful for the community's support because without that, we wouldn't have been able to implement as many enhancements as we have over the last few years. All right, anything else?
And I'll just add one thing, just kind of piggybacking on what, what Steve said. I, I see Sloan Dill, one of our new teachers here, but not a new teacher, she, she's got a lot of years of experience behind her. She came in well-trained in the Writing Revolution methodology. She had years of experience, she trained directly under Judy Hockman, is one of the reasons why we hired her, but, but she's gone, even in her first year, she's gone beyond just her classroom responsibilities and provided support. So in, in this initiative, because she has this extensive background and training, I, I've seen her mentoring, you know, colleagues and she's getting mentored in certain areas because she doesn't know everything about Tuckahoe, starting to know everything, but in this area, she has a lot of skill and expertise. So Steve, you know, the, the important thing, I believe, yes, the teachers have wholeheartedly embraced all of the initiatives. So I, I see it firsthand every day. And then what emerges are, are these teacher leaders that, you, they're not compensated, they don't need to go beyond the classroom, yet they do. And, and that's very inspiring for me and I, I not only thank Sloan, but she represents a lot of teachers that really have provided tremendous leadership, so it, it's going well and I, I expect it will continue.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions or anything? Okay, great. So just as a reminder, next week is our final board meeting of the academic year and that will be, actually, we'll start off with our final board recognition, starting at 6 o'clock, 6:30, starting at 6:30 in the auditorium and we'll be moving up here at 7:30 for the final meeting of the academic year. And next week is our, I think is our first stepping up or graduation ceremony. I think Thursday is the pre-K, a week from Thursday is our pre-K.
Yes, it's pre-K first.
And then the week of the 20th is when we have the kindergarten graduation, 5th grade stepping up, middle school, high school. I think I have everything.
You've got more.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's a lot of great activities going on if you're a member of the community and especially if you don't have kids in the school, come on out, see some of these ceremonies and you'll see what, what your tax dollars are going towards. So just as a reminder to the members of the board, we're gonna go back down to Dr. Wilson's office and reconvene executive session. Thank you and good night.